A second meeting for the month of June. Begin to begin by excusing Councilmember Christine Michael, who's out of state traveling and be back with us hopefully in our next meeting. If notice on the agenda, the first item is reviewing the business meeting agenda. We have a fairly lengthy business meeting, so we'll review that quickly. Or however long it takes. Following the welcome to pledge, we'll have citizen comments. I understand we have a lot of citizen comments tonight, and they've all been submitted by 5:00 PM in writing to our city manager, Tim Tengy, and he'll be reading those in to the record. And if any of them are over the three minutes, we'll just refer those to the minutes and not read the whole thing to be consistent with our policy. Following citizen comments, we're taking public comment on our trees and park stripe landscape ordinance, which that'll be a separate public comment. And after that public comment, we'll be having a public hearing on our proposed budget amendment for 2019-2020 fiscal year. I want to real quickly if on the trees and park landscape ordinance, we'll be talking that about that in our work sessions. We won't go over that now. You're right with that, Tim. And then on the proposed budget amendment, we'll also be talking about that in our work session. So we'll review that right now. We'll have a comment to opportunity to discuss that in a few minutes. Our action items tonight, the first item is ordinance 341. It's the budget amendment, and then we'll be talking about that during our work session. Then 5.2 is ordinance 342, adopting a final budget for the next fiscal year. Everyone's been aware that we've had a tender budget and had some discussion on that, so by law, I think we have to adopt a final budget this evening. Then with 5.3 is a resolution approving entry into an interlocal agreement with Cotton Heights Parks and Recreation Service area. If I remember correctly, we discussed that last week. We had Ben Hill with us and reviewed that. So any questions on that action item will move forward? Hearing none. 5.4 is a resolution 2020-20 approved entry into interlocal agreement. Participation as a co-permittee, co-permittee under you up these. I'm not sure what that is. I don't understand it well. So maybe Matt, you could take a minute. Well, we're going to talk about that, I guess, in the work session as well. That's kind of a routine. So we'll look at that. Item 5.5 is resolution 2020-29 is reappointments to the Planning Commission of Jesse Allen and Dan Mills. Tim, I understand we've sent out that information for the review. If I remember correctly, Jesse is a landscape architect and Dan Mills is a local businessman. Neither one are developers, and sometimes that's a concern. And Tim, that's your recommendation to reappoint those?
Yes, that's correct.
Any question about those appointments? Okay. Hearing none. Item 5.6 is a resolution 2020-30 approving reappointments to our Parks Trails and Open Space Committee. We have three individuals. I know one of the, well, maybe no two anyway. Greg Hilbig, Bruce Jorgensen, and Michael Menzen. So Mike Johnson, do you have any comments about those three? I understand Bruce is a landscape architect. I've known him years ago, but.
Yeah, yeah, Bruce is great. Greg Hilbig is the Draper Parks Manager. He lives, I believe, in District One in the city. And then Michael Menzen is the newest member of the committee. His term is up because he's completing the term of the previous person that stepped down.
Okay. And these are recommended by the city manager and staff. Any questions or concerns about those appointments? Okay. Hearing none. We'll go back to our work session on staff reports, and we'll turn it over to Matt Taylor. Let's talk about the trees and park strip landscape ordinance. We've kind of vetted that in a couple of previous meetings, and let's see where we are. Matt, you with us? Or Mike, you gonna do it?
Matt's here, so he's gonna present and just provide.
There he is. He just doesn't have a picture down the bottom. Okay.
There he is.
Hi there. Can y'all see me and hear me?
We can still see that beard. Yep.
All right. Great. It's a beautiful beard. All right. So just a recap. We covered this pretty extensively at your May 5 meeting. And we're just going to give you a quick update, so it shouldn't take too long. Again, just for the public's information, this ordinance establishes cities' goals regarding trees and the public right-of-way landscaping. It defines the city's and public's responsibilities in relation to public trees and trees on private property. Provides procedures for abatement of private tree hazards. Establish provisions for the protection of public trees and existing onsite trees on development as proposed. And define standards for partnership trees and partnership landscaping. Now, I'd add one note to this. This is not a retroactive ordinance. Any non-conforming situations caused by this ordinance will be allowed to continue. But redevelopment of a property or development of a property would trigger the standards. Otherwise, these standards are voluntary, and people may come closer into compliance, but they may not go further away from compliance, if that makes sense. Just a few updates since our last meeting on May 5. You know this, the Planning Commission was in April already recommended approval of the ordinance. Since your meeting on May 5, the Architectural Review Commission and the Parks Trail Open Space Committee recommended approval of the ordinance. And we presented to them. They provided us also, though, some requested modifications. Based off their feedback, we have modified the provisions to the City Forester, who will now review and approve tree preservation plans. And defer to the Architectural Review Commission when desired or requested, and that could be from the staff or the applicant on a project. The ARC felt very, had a lot of positive feedback on the ordinance. Originally, the ordinance was drafted that most, if not all, tree preservation plans would be reviewed by them, but they felt that was overkill and too much, and that they prefer that staff review most of those and have them mostly as an appeal basis to provide oversight on any disagreements on these plans. Both bodies recommended more diversification of trees. There will be a tree list which has 40 or 60 different types of trees on it that are identified as being appropriate for our ecosystem and climate. They encourage that, you know, the city overall adopts a broader base of trees in case there's some type of disease doesn't wipe out trees, like the American elm tree was wiped out back in, I think, the 1930s. But there was a recommendation from the ARC that maybe some trees such as, or streets such as Fort Union and Wasatch are limited in the selection of trees on the public right-of-way to help give uniformity and help achieve the canopy goals outlined in the ordinance. We also added some provisions related to tree height limitation under power poles. There's lots of guidance from our utility friends on this issue, and we've incorporated that into the ordinance. With that, I have all my former slides from our previous presentation. I do not plan on going through each of those, but they are available if you have any questions or like to dive into anything. If that, I turn the time back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm excited for this ordinance. I think it's great progress, and I appreciate the vetting through ARC and our Parks Trails and Open Space Committee. I think we've had comments from citizens for years about concern for trees and how we manage that and the canopy and those things. So I'm excited for it. Any questions of Matt right now? I think it's excellent job in preparing your order. It's very thorough. And again, we'll have you, Matt, introduce it as part of the, I guess we have a public comment on it. Yeah.
I think Mr. Johnson plans on introducing it before the public.
Do you always call him Mister?
Nope. Just formal, just formal meetings.
All right. Thank you. Any, hearing no comments or any comments? Let's move on to item B on staff reports. It's, I'm excited to hear about this, the CARES Act funding. Tim, we'll turn it over to you. I understand the county has a lot of money, but it's how to qualify for it is the question.
Yeah, I'm just going to give an introduction, and then I'm going to have Mike Johnson cover some of the details with this, but we have included a proposed agreement that was submitted by the county. It includes, it designates a little over a million dollars of potential funding available for our community. Michael, cover that in just a minute. This is the big part of this agreement, and even looking at the requirements of the CARES Act funding is a big part of what we have to evaluate, because there are very specified elements of what you can spend and utilize that funding for that I'll have Mike go through. We're going to be requesting that you consider this agreement with the county at the next city council meeting, so the first one in July. That still meets the timelines. We've talked to the county, and we just have to have this approved and have funding submitted back to them in the fall, and I'll let Mike cover that. So that's an introduction into it. You will be considering this at the next council meeting, and Mike, go ahead.
Thank you. So I've got the presentation on the screen here. This is just an overview of the CARES Act, what it is, and the kind of the trickle-down effect and why this money has ended up with the city, and then some options of what we can and some things that we cannot do with it. So the county, as part of the CARES Act, was classified as a local government by the federal definition of what that means. So they received a direct allocation from the federal government of 203, just a little over 203 million dollars. The state received 1.25 billion, I believe, and Utah County received some as well. Those are the only three direct recipients of funding in Utah. What Salt Lake County has decided to do is pass through some of that funding to each city or township within the county on a per capita basis. So essentially, we have a population, and they have a formula of X amount of dollars per person. And they arrived at just over a million dollars that is allocated as pass-through funding to Cottonwood Heights. This is still county funding. So the agreement is pretty strict in that, you know, if there's an audit and, you know, local funds are somehow used improperly, the county's on the hook for that. So that's, you know, that's the reason for all of the kind of the hoops and the limitations here. The other important thing to keep in mind is funds that are not expended, not just earmarked, but expended by October 1st are returned to Salt Lake County. So some of the allowable uses, this is really close to what the federal language says, but this is also in the county's agreement. Funds may only cover costs that are, there's kind of three things. There are necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency. They were not accounted for in the budget that was most recently in place as of the end of March. And costs that were incurred between March 1st and December 30th, 2020, again, as a direct result of the public health emergency. Few examples that are called out in the agreement of prohibited uses, like Tim said, it's fairly restricted on what we can use this money for. So the funding cannot be used as revenue replacement for lower-than-expected tax or other revenue collections. Also, the county and state and others have some funding programs that they have established, and we need to watch out for using our money for a similar reason or purpose as those other funding sources. We essentially can't be redundant in our funding and, you know, be in jeopardy of violating the allowed uses there. And then there are numerous other limitations per the U.S. Treasury Department. There's a really convenient kind of frequently asked questions list, and it's 10 pages of questions of what funding can and cannot be used for. But again, they all get at, they're very strict in nature and related to direct expenses as a result of the public health emergency. Just to give you an idea, this list is not comprehensive, but this is an example of other federal and state and local programs that have been funded by this CARES Act, this federal funding. The first one is the economic impact payments, the stimulus checks, if you will, that many households received. But there's some other programs that were rolled out earlier on at a federal level. Through the Small Business Association, there was the Paycheck Protection Program and the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program. And then some tax credits that incentivize businesses to retain employees. So they're listed there as well. And then the unemployment assistance, which adds a supplement to unemployment benefit that expires here at the end of July. A few local resources that we're aware of, and there may be more than this. The state of Utah has established a rental assistance program, both for certain qualifying residential renters, but also commercial renters. A portion of that fund was funded with these federal dollars. And then the county just, actually just went live this morning at 9 o'clock. They announced last week they've allocated $40 million countywide for their Small Business Impact Grant, and that's a grant that's that's targeted at small businesses, so under 100 employees, that are the types of businesses that were directly affected by the public health order. So food service, your personal care, your personal service businesses, like your hair salon, spas, things like that. Gyms, fitness, arts, recreation. So those types of businesses that were some, in some cases, forced to shut down, they're eligible for this Small Business Impact Grant. And under that grant, they're eligible for up to $35,000 or the amount of money that they can demonstrate they lost while affected by this pandemic. So like I said, there may be more, but those are the ones we're aware of, and the one we really want to keep our eye on is that county one. Because if we establish something, we can't be redundant or repetitive with that one. So this is just a few options for city funding that we'd like some input on tonight. As was mentioned, we have just over a million dollars, which is quite a bit, but some of the options we can use that money for a recovery of costs directly related to COVID-19. So that's your, you know, personal protective equipment, your cleaning products, any office modifications that were necessary for improved health and safety for either staff or the public. And I think the Finance Department's been tracking that. We're in the ballpark of, you know, $8,000 to $10,000, maybe a little more than that, but but not nearly a million dollars in that regard. But there are some uses of that funding that we plan to take advantage of there. Another option that's been talked about at length with county officials, we can offer community grants for local businesses and organizations that either did not receive other funding or are not going to receive county funding or were not chosen. So there is an opportunity to develop a grant program to benefit city businesses. And like I said, we'll just need to be careful in how that's developed to make sure that it's a qualifying use. And then fulfillment of other.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
On that second one, when does the county's grant period go? Is it until they run out of money, or is it through the end of the year, or is it till October, or do we know?
We've been told that those will be funded on a first-come, first-served basis. So they have 40 million. Each business can apply that qualifies and can apply for up to $35,000. I haven't heard of a hard deadline or a hard cap on that. But I assume it's probably in that fall, because the businesses, the expenses are incurred through December, so I would anticipate.
I guess my question ultimately was if, could we use some of the money that was coming to us to expand that to be more available to Cottonwood Heights businesses, if they made an application through that, and then using some of our allotment specifically for them, and relieving some of the pressure on the 40 million?
Yeah. So we have talked with the county. Our grant program can't look exactly like theirs, but we can target businesses that may not be eligible. Maybe they're a different type of business than the county is opening their program to, but still, we're greatly affected by the pandemic. So there is an opportunity there to fill in some of the gaps. You know, some of our very small businesses have kind of been left behind or not been able to get the funding that's been available to date. So that would be our intention, would be develop something that targets those.
Mike, can we?
Certainly, anyone that misses out or is not chosen for the county grant and is still eligible, we could target with that grant as well.
Mike, can we recover or reimburse our cost to administer such a grant?
That's a good question, and that's something we need to look at, because, you know, building out a grant is not necessarily an easy task, and
It's not, yeah.
We have to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, part of our plan is to I'll get to that in a minute, but to develop kind of a roadmap of how we're going to administer this and general amounts for each use, and then run that through both the county for their feedback, but also for legal review to make sure that our anticipated expenditures are allowable within the program. But another area to look, just to cover that third bullet point quickly, is you know, fulfillment of expenditures for other community organizations that are directly attributed to COVID-19. This would include, you know, someone like the REC Center, who may not have been eligible for other funding sources. So we do have a meeting set up with Ben Hill to talk further about this.
Yeah, in my pre-morgue meeting with Wifward, it sounded like local districts, like the REC Center or Wifward or others made public, the wastewater, those types may not be eligible for any type of CARES funding. So yes, if there's some way that we could maybe repurpose that to at least the proportional share that we share, like with Wifward or with the REC Center, I think that that would be, I'm assuming it would have to be the same types of expenditures, unexpected ones that came up because of the the crisis, but that would be great to find.
Yeah. So we will have a meeting with Ben Hill, at least. We're trying to organize that for the end of this week, and then we'll kind of go from there on that. So this is the roadmap, and then I'll open it up for discussion or recommendations or suggestions or anything, but it starts with tonight, the council discussion, and then at our next meeting, we have to formally vote to accept the money. And then, like I said, once we have that money, we have until October 1st to expend it. Otherwise, it's returned to the county. So our intention would be to quickly, probably between now and that July meeting, draft a funding plan that at least tries to identify and quantify the different types of relief we can offer or things we can fund and plan that out. And then go through a legal review process to make sure that what we're hoping to use that money for is legally allowed to be used for that purpose. And as part of drafting this plan, you know, we'll make sure we're covering all the itemized city expenses and all applicable things from the city standpoint there and and getting all the different department inputs on that. Once we have a plan in place, we anticipate just running this again through the council for final review and kind of sign off and perhaps even get some feedback from the county to make sure any grants we're offering are allowable within their guidelines. And then implementation. Some of the direct payments are quick and easy, but if, you know, like the mayor said, if we're establishing a grant program, we'd like to get that up and running as quickly as possible to get working through that, to be able to expend all those funds by October 1st. So with that, that's the information I have, and I'm, you know, tonight, we're just hoping to present this to you just as an overview, and then any, you know, any ideas that the council would have in terms of how we can use these funds, you know, something we can look at, including the plan and review, would be appreciated.
Yeah, just my quick comment, we'll open it up further, is my emphasis, after recovering any direct cost we have as a city, is to look at our small businesses and see if there's anything we can do. But my concern again is trying to expend those funds appropriately by October is a very short window, and that's why my question, if and we can recover costs of time to implement it, because that's a lot of work. Yeah. Yes, I mean, I agree. I love the idea of being able to help our small businesses. I also like the idea of being able to potentially help some of the other service providers in the area that may have been hit and been eligible, otherwise of the REC Center. I don't know if the school district has hit things like that, where they may or may not be eligible, but I think we should at least have those discussions there to find out if there's some way we can aid that as well. Okay, thank you. Those good comments. Any further questions? You've got a lot of work to put something together in the plan, so we'll see that in our next meeting, hopefully.
Yes, we'll plan to put something together, have some internal discussions, and be back with a kind of a funding plan for you to look at.
All right. Thank you, Mike or Mr. Johnson. Next item on the agenda is the interlocal agreement with Salt Lake County. Matt, you want to talk about that? Because it's not something I'm very familiar with at all.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is, I'd like to thank Mr. Johnson for such a great presentation, though. Appreciate.
This is really fun.
Anyway, so what the UPDS is, all it stands for is the Utah Pollution Utah Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. Bottom line is, this is an out, this is from, if we go back to 1972, we're not going to stay there very long, but 1972, the Clean Water Act was passed, and from that became this program of cleaning up any waters, any water that goes into navigable waters in the United States. So the UPDS is a subsection of the national system. And based on that, what we're required to do as a city is we're required to clean any water that comes out of our city that goes into any of the creeks or any of the groundwater or anything of that nature. We have to clean that water. And that includes water from our system, water from construction runoff and water from industrial. But this permit is doing, it's pretty straightforward. We, as a city, are part of a group called the Jordan Valley Municipalities. And that Jordan Valley Municipalities is all the cities within Salt Lake County. And we joined as a coalition, and the city has been a member of this since its inception in 2005. So we joined a coalition to help us implement and take care of this program that we're required to follow. What this does is we are signing an agreement with Salt Lake County, who manages that. We sit on the coalition, and we work together with information, legislation, projects, and also the the public campaign that is required. So it's a cost that we pay every year of approximately $5,000, and that's based on our municipal size to the county, and in a nutshell, that's really what it is. And this is for the next five years. We sign this agreement every five years.
That one, that's a budget item of $5,000 per year?
Correct. Yes. We have that in our budget every year. This is just renewing the agreement. I shouldn't say just. This is renewing the agreement. You're on mute, Mayor.
This is not tied to jurisdictional wetlands or stormwater?
No, this is, well, yes, it is tied to stormwater. This is what it is. It's all about our discharge into, it could be wetlands, it could be, you know, the creeks, Big and Little Cottonwood Creek, any groundwater that we discharge through injection wells, all of those. It's a permit that requires us to follow guidelines to clean the water before we discharge it.
Right. Any further questions? Seems straightforward to me. And it's, the fiscal note's pretty minimal, so we appreciate being a participant in that, and we'll hopefully move forward. Any further questions? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda, I turn this over to Tim Tingey and Scott Juergis on the budget amendment for 2019-2020. Scott?
I'll just, Mayor, it's okay. I'll give a, just a brief introduction. Just to reiterate, this is, as we move towards the year end, which we're in the final month of this existing budget. Just to reiterate, this is, as we move towards the year end, which we're in the final month of this existing budget, the 2019, 2020 budget. We oftentimes in cities municipalities have amendments to to wrap up some of the items, including revenues that we receive, grants, and other things associated primarily with memorandums of understanding and finalize some of those elements as we wrap up the year. And so this is what we're presenting tonight. Scott, if you want to go ahead and add to what I said and give the details.
Excuse me, yes. So most of the things on here are are either reimbursements or MOU related. So I'll just kind of go through these. There are eight adjustments for the general fund and one in the CDRA fund. So the first item on the general fund is we had got a windshield replaced and it was leaking. And so we got a reimbursement on that because we had gotten it fixed elsewhere. So that's the first item. The next item is a series of several DUI overtime reimbursements, and this is related to an MOU in the police department. The number three is the canine donation that we received in, I can't remember the exact month, November, December kind of timeframe, from Glenn and Dr. Kara Clapp. And and we just needed to get needed to get that budgeted. We hadn't done a budget adjustment since then. Target Black Friday services, we'd we had provided some services to target on Black Friday. And this is just to recognize that expense and revenue. Number five is the JAG grant that we received for police training, $8,001. Number six is the state asset forfeiture grant. And this again went to police training for $2,500. And then number seven is a sale of police evidence that's that's unclaimed. And those items, we we typically run back in so they can buy some supplies in the police for that. So that's 1225. So all all items number one through seven, excuse me, increase our expense, but also have offsetting increased revenue. So there's no net impact on it on our general fund in a negative way by receiving those items. Number eight is the Central Wasatch Commission bus service contribution, and this is one that was talked about. I can't remember the timeframe exactly, November, December, I'm going to guess, again, to increase increase the bus service that went on in our our contribution of 5,000. So that's the only one that's not offset by additional revenues. The last item is just really technical in nature. We did not receive the final 750,000 of the funds from Salt Lake County for the Canyon Center parking structure until I believe it was either late in September or early in October of last year. And I missed that on our last budget adjustment that we did. So we're just carrying this forward to this one, just so that matches the revenue that we received for this year. So they're all pretty straightforward. Nothing that, from my perspective anyhow, that that is concerning to me. So I don't know if anyone has any questions about any of those items.
Hey, Scott, on number two, that memorandum of understanding, who was that between?
I can't remember if it's the DEA or if it's the Utah Department of Public Safety. I don't know if the chief is still on here and might be able to answer that.
Robbie, are you here? Can you provide that information?
DUI overtime?
Yeah.
Yeah. Utah safety.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Was that for enforcement in our city or did our our officers go elsewhere and help with someone else's thing?
And no, they they provide funding for additional shifts to look for DUIs within the municipality's jurisdiction. And we applied for those shifts, and that's the reimbursement fees coming back to us from the state.
Robbie, could you also give a little update or maybe on items number five and six? The JAG grant for federal justice assistant training or as state asset forfeitures, that drug forfeiture, is that what that is?
That's exactly what they are. In fact, both of them are are very similar. They use forfeited funds to that for things that qualify, such as police training, which is normally what we use ours for. So when we do conferences or or training, they they pay us back, and that's what it's for.
Yeah.
That's where it's from.
And also, go ahead. Tim, is that a memorandum of understanding, something that comes before the council? Did we sign off on that?
Yes, that that has come before the council. I'm not sure when it was at Chief Russo, you may be able to say. But yes, that memorandum of understanding was approved by the council.
Are you talking about the Utah Highway Safety?
Well, DUI DUI overtime memorandum is what she's asking about.
Yes, yes.
I'm assuming that MOU covers multiple items, not just overtime shift.
I believe that particular one covers overtime, is just restricted to overtime shifts with highway safety.
But do do we have a date that we signed that?
I I don't have the the date in front of me right now, but we, I believe that was brought to the council. I don't have a date on that.
Natalia, that's something that we can get you for your information. Also, just for the council's information, and I know there's questions and it's a hot topic, so I'll just lay it on a table when we talk about police training. In our in our July meeting, we'll be having a full discussion on training and and related topics in the police department. So wondering if that's coming, it'll be coming in our July meeting. Doug, did you have a comment?
Yes, I was going to say, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, for some reason, it's not giving my highlight. Is is some of the, you know, uncertain holidays, I know that certain organizations donate to that to help in certain holidays. Is that part of this? Or is this individual of a holiday overtime?
The DUI in highway safety program is funded through fines and forfeitures on arrestees and what do they call it? Their fees that are associated with the with the convictions. And that money goes into a pot, and then they target specific holidays, Super Bowls and St. Patrick's Day in different high drinking times and award us shifts that are paid at premium time, premium overtime. And officers sign up for those shifts and then make the stops, make the DUIs, and then submit their progress reports back to the state. We report our wages back to the state, and they reimburse us.
Fantastic. Thank you for that clarification.
The idea is that when we make these additional arrests, that at some point, those people will be before the courts and be paying fines and so forth. And so the system funds itself.
Further questions on the the proposed budget amendment? I know, just as a side notice that I find interesting, you know, I've been involved with drug forfeiture funds historically when helped create Drug Court in the late 90s, which were was a program as an alternative to incarceration for nonviolent offenders. And it was drug forfeiture funds that we used to help fund the creation, ongoing support for Drug Court and eventually the mental health court and so on. So it's it's got a long history, and again, we'll talk more about some of these types of things in our July meeting. Any further discussion on the this item from staff reports? It will be acting on it in our business meeting. The next item, item E, if there's no further discussion, is the attendee budget discussion. Again, I'll turn this over to Tim and Scott and walk through it and also be walking through it and giving us some detail during our business meeting.
Okay, I will. I will start and then let Scott talk about some of the the adjustments that were made once we received the the levy rate, property tax rate, and also some items that were modified with UFA. Let me let me just talk a little bit about our budget process. This process is a very intensive part of our life here at Cottonwood Heights and every city. The budget is such an important document, important element of what we do and how we move forward with the business of the city. So it's not a, it's not a easy process, and it's it's a very detailed process that we have to consider. Way back in January, we started, Scott Jurgis and I started working and meeting with each of the department heads to outline what their needs are for the budget. We started into or we've been into a compensation study process as well. And we worked with the department heads in shaping some of the preliminary figures for the budget. In addition to that, we met with you, each of you at the council retreat and went through the the budget priorities and expectations for our budget. That retreat included or was in January. And then we began really shaping some of the preliminary proposals based on that. And we had the preliminary budget that was put together by Scott Jurgis with the input from the department heads. And then we began the process of meeting with the committees. We had our budget committee, our compensation committee, and they started meeting in January and February to go through the elements of the budget. If you'll recall, there were even more complications with this budget because we were evaluating a stormwater, a stormwater fee as well as other fees as defined by the council in our retreat to evaluate as revenue sources. And so that was in conjunction with with this budget process as well. Our budget committee really looked closely at the stormwater fee, was even working towards recommendations of that. Same with our compensation committee, looking at our our compensation study. And then at that point, we had the issue of COVID-19 hit our city as well as the country and world. And then there was a a reevaluation of our revenues, reevaluation of our expenses. A number of things were put into place, such as hiring freezes and other things that the council and the budget committee and compensation committees had to had to address and really look at. As part of that process, it included really scaling back what the recommendations would look like, especially with revenues and with compensation study elements. We worked through that through the months of February, March, and April, working with the committees. And then we started meeting with the city council on our budget proposal, which really had a strong emphasis on revenues and expenses and how we are going to address those, especially with the COVID-19 concerns and challenges that we're facing. So all of that led us to input from the city council, multiple work sessions, and eventually adoption of the tentative budget, which occurred in May. And then here we're back with you after a number of public input, a public input period that we've allowed public comment on this. And so the the whole focus of this is to be as transparent as possible, and we've really focused on that. This has been a a citywide process with department heads, with committee members of council members included, as well as city staff in shaping this budget. We also were asked at the end of or at the beginning of last year's budget to evaluate, do a budget budget comparison document to be even more transparent. Scott Jurgis spent a considerable amount of time, and I assisted with that in evaluating other cities and comparing those other cities with tax rates, with amounts that they had allocated within each department. We we finalized that after input from the budget committee as well and brought that forward to even be more transparent in how we evaluate the budget and comparing and looking at at resources with other cities. So those are, that's the process that we went through. It is a very intensive process. It's a very open process, and the input that was received by council members through that process and the direction received has been very important as we bring this to you tonight. We are going to be recommending adoption of this budget tonight. You've seen all of it many times. Scott has a couple of modifications that he'll go through right now. But I just want to emphasize that I I take a lot of pride in the transparency of this document and the transparency in the process of not just having this brought forward to the council for your consideration in April, May, but there's been extensive input prior to that time. And so, Scott, I'll turn the time over to you to give the specifics of what of where we're at right now.
Excuse me. Okay, so there were two changes from our tentative budget that are incorporated into this document. Both changes, we've talked about one, one, we didn't know the amount. But last week, near the end of the week, I think it was, well, it was on Wednesday, we got the amount for our property taxes. So our property taxes right here resulted in an increase of $13,137 over what we had in our budget prior to that time. And that's mainly due to new growth that we had in in the city. And new growth comes by way of maybe finishing a basement, maybe doing in addition to a house, maybe building a new house or a business. Any of those kinds of things is what's what equates into new growth. Increasing in the value of a home does not change the the revenues that we get. It's just actual new growth, you know, adding on or like I do, like I just outlined.
What was our new certified tax rate?
The certified tax rate is, I've got it right here, point 001898.
Scott, were you surprised that new growth is that small?
New growth was actually right here, 63,142. We had budgeted, yeah, we had budgeted 50,000 some odd dollars. And it came in a little higher than what we thought it would be. And so the the net new growth is about 63,000.
I misunderstood. I thought you were saying new growth was 13, so yeah.
No, it was 13 higher than what we had anticipated. And then for FIRE, we knew about this decrease, the from what we had in our budget. That came just after we had adopted our tentative budget for a reduction of $19,342. So when you take both of those items into into effect, there's about 32,000 some odd dollars in net savings to our general fund. So that that just flows through to an increase in our final fund balances. So I'm going to scroll down. Nothing else has changed. I'm going to scroll down to that. Okay, so in the overall impact in in our general fund is that we will use about $1.3 million in the the fund that this year. That leaves 2.5 million overall in the general fund, but we need to retain some of that about about just under a million for the 5%, another 200,000 for our extra 1% for city ordinance. And then we have about 550 to 7,000 for our PTO reserve. So that would leave us about 785,000, and before we were just over 750,000 that we had projected to be in there. So the net change, I think I have it down. I can't remember where I put it now. Anyhow, I I put it somewhere in this document, but now I can't seem to find it real quick. But basically, our net change in our in our overall budget is is about $32,000 from what we had in our tentative budget recommendation that we had put forward.
That 32,000 is actually to the good, right?
Yes, yep.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, Scott, but anybody else have some questions regarding the budget? And we'll go through it quickly again in the business meeting. As you're looking at that or thinking, one question I have is, Scott, on the current fiscal year, the 2019, 2020, we're projecting under expenditure of 127,000, correct?
Um, let me pull up.
Look under fund balance, yeah.
So for the current year, it's 127,000 less than or less than what we have budgeted. So So this is our general fund right here, and we're, so our current year adjusted budget shows 561,000 of fund balance use. We're actually gonna be probably closer to $433,000 fund balance use for the current year.
My question is, do you feel that number will change? Or do you feel that that's pretty much where it'll be? And the reason I asked the question, let me tell you why I asked the question.
Okay.
And it may be a loaded question. In our last meeting, we talked about a, we signed, we approved a contract for road repairs, chip seal, whatever, I can't remember, and the bid came in like $150,000 under what was budgeted. So will this reflect that, or have we absorbed that $150,000 somewhere else already?
So the $150,000 is not in our general fund, that's in our capital improvements fund, so if there's savings on that, it would flow through to the capital improvements fund, fund balance. Excuse me, we could always transfer that back in, excuse me, to the general fund. Let me get a drink. If we needed to, but I wouldn't probably recommend it at this time till we get a good look at all of our projects that we have there at that time. I do think we could end up a little better than this. I am aware of a couple items of revenue where we came in a little bit better than anticipated. One of those is Class C roads were a little bit better than anticipated. We don't yet have April's sales tax numbers. That will probably be another week, maybe 10 days until we get that number. So that will be very telling in terms of whether we think this will go up or down. Our expenditures, I think we're probably reasonably close to where this document projects our expenditures to go to, which coming up, where do I have it?
So as you're looking at that, do we have expenditures in this budget that potentially could be reimbursed from the CARES Act? And if so, would that also?
Well, so.
Be a small amount, but yeah.
Yeah, so, I don't know if I can, can you see that Excel screen?
Yeah.
Okay, so to date, we have about $11,648 that we have got in CARES funding, allowable expenditures. So that's what we have to date. It's not a ton of money that we have, and that's not gonna be material to the overall budget projection. I'm not really anticipating much more than that, maybe a thousand or two.
Yeah.
But not, not a lot. The bigger impacts will be if, if and when we get a, some type of a program worked out like, like, shall I say, Mr. Johnson is outlining. And when he gets that done, that will be the biggest thing, but none of that is budgeted at this point in time. So that would kind of be separate from what we're looking at.
Okay, and just a reminder to the council, going forward, and I don't mean to end on a scary negative note, is that if we're taking the 1.2, whatever it was, million from the fund balance this year to balance our budget, if we had the same exact budget a year from now, we would not have adequate fund balance discretion to do it a second year. So over the next 12 months, we're gonna need to be very sensitive to the challenge before us as far as getting this budget to balance. And there's a lot of other variables, I admit, and we won't go into them now, but I think we just need to be aware that the COVID-19 has impacted us in a way that it raises a lot of questions going forward, that we're gonna have to be very sensitive to when you look at the fund balance.
May I say something?
Please.
Yeah, so related to that, as you recall in the council retreat, we were looking at the stormwater fee, as well as the telecom fee, and those are things that we will have to evaluate, and what that could do if the council decides to incorporate those into next year's budget, is that that would definitely strengthen the revenues coming in for the general fund, and have, that's an option that can be looked at. In addition to that, we're gonna be evaluating, as we talked with you about, each month where we're at with the sales tax figures for, with COVID-19. And, you know, hopefully that we're, we can, the economy can recover in a rapid amount of time, and we'll be addressing that each month with you as we talk about where we're at as far as our budget and the impacts.
The other important thing to note is, to me, one of our greatest assets is our employees, who provide the service to our constituents. And this budget has a zero COLA and zero merit. So the challenge that I'm referring to doesn't even actually take into account that challenge of trying to be sensitive to COLAs and merits and those things. So I'm just saying that hopefully the public understands, and we as a council understand, that this next budget preparation period could be one of the most challenging we've had. Even though I want to personally applaud Scott and Tim, I feel this current process we've just been through has been the best one that I've been involved with since I've been on the council, because I think it's been more transparent with the committees, with the department heads, and the numerous opportunities we've had to give input. So hats off to Tim and to Scott for your efforts, and hopefully we'll just keep making it better and better. So any, any final comments on the tentative budget from the council? Please, go ahead, Doug.
I've just, I think, wasn't April the month that we felt was the most impacted from COVID? That's my concern of what those numbers are. It looks like May is actually coming back, at least nationally, better than they anticipated. But April probably is the largest impacted month. Will that change anything, Scott, or Tim, on some of those numbers we still don't have?
We projected a $200,000 per month decrease for the first six months of the new fiscal year. So it's really looking forward is what we really have to be sensitive with.
Yeah, I, sorry, I was on mute before, but, so it just depends on how it compares to my monthly projection moving forward. I'm cautiously optimistic that my estimates are a little bit more pessimistic than the reality. So we'll really know when April comes in, because I agree with you, there's been more recovery in May than we, than I thought there would be. And so April's gonna be the really telling month to see, okay, where do are those revenues come in versus what we expect, what we projected, and that will, like I said, we should know that, and I would guess a week to 10 days. As soon as we know that, we'll all get the information to Tim so that we can get that sent out to all of you, so you're aware. But that will be the big telling thing. I'm not aware of anything that says it's gonna be worse than what we projected, so.
I think I knew that you'd anticipated, and I'm hoping you're right. In this case, I'm hoping you were more pessimistic.
Good, good budget people always give us pessimism because they love to come in later and tell us how much better it is, yeah.
I don't know if we love it, but.
But in June through December, I understand those projections are showing approximately $200,000 per each of those six months.
$100,000.
$100,000 each month, Mayor.
Yep.
Is that what it was? Okay, Mike, thank you for the correction. That's, and that's about just under 20%, is that right, Scott?
On a, if it went on for an annual basis, then yes, so for each month, it's about a 20% reduction. The net reduction in our sales tax revenues is about 10%, because we have roughly a half year's worth in there.
And I believe, just, I mean, the thinking that came out of my committee with Councilmember Michael and myself was the mid-year January would be a good, leading up to January would be the best point to take a very serious look at those numbers. So in the September, October timeframe, looking at that to determine, should we keep those where they are, or do they need to be adjusted then so that we can not have to make severe and drastic changes the last quarter of the fiscal year?
And I appreciate that clarification, and that is true, and I think we talked about that as a council. I know in in UFA, they're taking the same approach. When we talked about COLAs and merits being frozen, I think there's a commitment that in late fall, we take a look at that and see where we are, and hopefully, as Doug mentioned, and Scott hopefully can support later, is that things are not as dire as some have projected. But I get a sense and feel it's opening up a little bit better than some anticipators, hopefully continues. Any further comments on the adopting of the budget as an action item in our next meeting? You have an opportunity then to comment as well. With that, I don't think we have any calendar items to review as far as upcoming events. Tim, do you have anything?
I don't, I don't at this point.
And we have nothing on closed meetings tonight, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. With that, we have about 55 minutes until our business meeting. Any final questions regarding the agenda tonight in the work session? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn and move to the business meeting at 7:00. Why don't you know, do I even need a motion? I can just do that, right?
If you need one, I'll move, we adjourn the work session and reconvene the business meeting at 7:00.
All in favor, just say aye.
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 Thank you. We'll see you at 7:00.